Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're pleased to see a full council chambers this evening. Thankful for all of our visitors. We're happy that you're all here, particularly as always happy to see our superintendent, Scroochy, this evening. I also think I see Board President Jenny Stewart with us this evening. So, thank you both very much. Jamie, would you please begin our meeting by calling the roll?
Asbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Hollenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
And Zanfordino.
The minutes for the meeting that was held on March 4th, 2019 were presented to council prior to this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, is our motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Jamie, do we have correspondents this evening?
None this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Proceed directly to Mayor Edwards for some special recognitions.
We do indeed have some special recognitions, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. And I'm going to ask if Chief Mormon and Chief Hetrick would please come forward to lead the procession and to make some introductions and tell us why we're all gathered here this evening, not because of a council meeting.
Good evening. Would like to formally introduce to you the newest member of our police division. We're a little delayed in getting him in here because of scheduling conflicts, but he did finish his probationary period in August of last year. I'd like to invite Officer Christopher Rowley to come forward, please, and I'll let you see him. Okay, Chris. Chris has come to us from Murray, Kentucky. He's attended Murray State University, majoring in criminal justice and sociology. Chris is also an eight-year veteran of the United States Marine Corps Reserve and currently serves as a sergeant and an M1A1 tank crew member. He is stationed with the 4th Tank Battalion, 4th Marine Division in Fort Knox, Kentucky currently in his part-time endeavors with the Marine Corps. So, he received his basic peace officer certification in January of 2018 from the Highway Patrol Academy in Columbus, and he is currently assigned as a patrol officer working the 5P to 3A shift. So, Chris, thanks for coming to Bowling Green and welcome, welcome here.
Thank you. All the very best.
Tonight, I would like to introduce you to three of our newest firefighters. I'd like to have them come on down to the front here, please. Jason Adkins, Tyler Ellis, and Michael Brown. It is my honor as your fire chief to introduce to you Bowling Green's newest firefighters. Although the fire service is nothing new to these three gentlemen, they joined the ranks of Bowling Green Fire one year ago as probationary firefighters. During that time, they have proven to their fellow firefighters and their officers, they have what it takes to excel in a profession that at times can be very demanding. It is evident through their hard work, dedication, and a desire to learn, they have what it takes to be successful in their chosen profession. All three have passed their academic and their technical requirements with honors and exemplify what it takes to be a firefighter. I'm proud to introduce to you our three newest firefighters, Michael Brown, Jason Adkins, and Tyler Ellis. Congratulations and welcome to Bowling Green Fire, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks a lot.
Always the best part of this night is to actually introduce their family. So, if I can have the family of all three of my newest firefighters stand up, please, to be recognized, because it not only takes dedicated firefighters, it takes a dedicated family to support them. Without their families, it would be...
Thank you. Thank you all very much. On behalf of my peers on city council, I'd like to welcome you all to Bowling Green and thank you for your service. From my perspective, one of the most important things that we do as a legislative body is to do our small part in providing you all the resources that you need to do your job. The service that you provide to our community is invaluable, and I hope that you always recognize the fact that this body and every member of the city is here to support your efforts and is always very appreciative of what you do. So, thank you and welcome to Bowling Green. Jamie, we will move on to lobby visitation. Has anyone signed up for lobby visitation today?
Yes, we have one person tonight, Neocles Leontis.
Neocles, you're familiar with the drill. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm sorry, my throat is a little hoarse because I've just been getting over a cold. My name is Neocles Leontis, and I am a resident of 119 North Summit Street, Bowling Green, Ohio. I'm speaking tonight to inform residents of Bowling Green, Ohio, especially those who rent or whose children rent in the city, that there is no legal requirement in Bowling Green for fire safety inspection or even health inspection of older houses that have been divided up into apartments before they have been put on the market for rental. I want to repeat that for everyone to understand. There is no requirement that older houses turned into apartments be subject to fire safety or health inspection by relevant city or county authorities. There is also no requirement that electrical wiring in older rental properties meet modern electrical codes. Thus, many older properties in BG lack proper grounding, posing hazards for electrical shock or electrical fires. I was first alerted to this situation when students of mine at the university, I'm a professor of chemistry, complained about the state of an older house that they had been promised by the landlord would be cleaned up and repaired before they moved in. We advised them to request a fire safety inspection from the Bowling Green Fire Department, and in fact, that was completed, carried out, and 13 violations were discovered. I'm going to quote verbatim from the report of the Bowling Green Fire Department. Quote, "The electrical hazards constitute an immediate fire hazard and shock hazard to the occupants. The electrical service and interior wiring are substandard and must be upgraded." I want to point out that from the outside of the house, one would never suspect the condition of the wiring, the bad condition of the wiring, and that internal, and that only an internal inspection could show that. If the students had not requested the fire safety inspection, they would never have known they were in danger. And the question I have is how many other renters find themselves in similar situations, not only students of ours at Bowling Green State University, but also families with young children who rent? At present, we have no way of knowing because the city does not require landlords to register their properties or to subject them to regular inspections to prove that they conform to basic standards of human habitation. I'd like to ask everyone to help spread the news so that all BG renters are aware of this possible danger to them. This actually struck quite home, struck quite close to home. My own stepdaughter could have been hurt or killed in an apartment fire in 2011, which she was a student here in Bowling Green, that started at night in the closet of the apartment next to hers in a large older apartment building in Bowling Green. Fortunately, she was woken up by the fire department, which arrived promptly when it was summoned. At the time, I was unaware that there is no requirement for regular fire inspections in Bowling Green, and it did not occur to me to request a fire report to find out whether the owners had been in violation of any fire code. Very suspiciously, the water heaters in that building were located in the bedroom closets of each apartment, and there was no protective cladding or compartment around the fire, around the water heaters. One can imagine residents, students, throwing their clothes in the closet and perhaps an item accidentally touching a hot surface to cause the fire. We won't know because when I recently requested a copy of the fire report, I was told that after five years, fire reports in Bowling Green are destroyed. In this age of electronic reports, there is no reason to throw away historical reports that can help us to understand the nature and extent of the challenges and problems we have to solve. So, I would like to request city council at this time that you ask the fire department to stop destroying fire reports and keep them ad perpetuum. I think that's the first step we can take in addressing this issue. I would like to say that the same should apply to information regarding fire inspections. It should be easy for BG residents, potential renters, to establish if and when a given property was last inspected and what the result was. These reports should be put online. These measures will increase transparency and alert the public as to which landlords of properties are being maintained in accord with public safety and which ones are not. In conclusion, I would like to advise everyone before renting in Bowling Green to ask the potential landlord or rental agency when, if ever, the most recent fire safety or health inspection has been carried out. For those who are already renting and have reasons to be concerned, for example, you can see worn or exposed wiring or old fuse boxes, you have the right to call the Bowling Green Fire Department, they're very competent professionals, as you saw tonight, and request a fire inspection of the property you are renting. Your landlord will be obligated to correct any deficiencies or violations of the fire code. The non-emergency phone number at the fire department where you can request a fire inspection of your property is 419-352-3106. You can also request a health inspection from the Wood County Health Department at I also advise potential renters and their families to ask whether a property they are considering renting is sufficiently insulated. According to Columbia Gas, which serves our area by delivering gas for heating, over 3,000 rental units in Bowling Green are substandard with regard to insulation and energy efficiency. This results in high utility bills in the winter and, of course, in the summer with air conditioning, and can result in hardship for students and others on limited income, especially families with children, who may have to choose between food, utility bills, or medicines during times of extended colds such as we have experienced this winter. Finally, I would like to make one more request to the fire division. I went to the website, so looked at the mission, and I feel that one more point should be added, that the mission should be formally, I mean, it's obviously part of their mission, but it was not stated on the website, prevention of fire and enforcement of fire codes should also be added to the mission statement. It's a job they're already doing, but it should be put there formally so we can all see it. That would be my last suggestion. Thank you very much for your attention.
Moving on in our agenda, Jamie, would you please lead us through the introduction of new legislation?
That would be...
I don't have those.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's introduction of new legislation by council members. Mr. Jeffers, I believe you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I have a resolution transferring previously appropriated funds, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to Poe Road improvements and ditch culvert Phase II improvement project. Ordinance certifying unpaid cost of snow removal to the county auditor for placement on the tax duplicate. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of materials not needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bruce. We now move to our official reports.
Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, you now have before you, or will just about, or very soon have before you, the long anticipated, a strategy for redevelopment for the East Worcester Street Corridor as proposed by Development Strategies of St. Louis. The report is a culmination of a process that began in June 2018 and is a collaborated effort between the city of Bowling Green and Bowling Green State University. It reflects months of substantial input by various stakeholders in the community and the work of a steering committee involving key staff members from both the university and the city. In many respects, the report is a byproduct of a process that began in 2012 with the city and the university visioning that led into the future land use update in 2014 and continued through the community action plan in 2017. Each of these four community redevelopment efforts is interrelated, one to the other with timely and important, and I might add, challenging recommendations primed for implementation. In looking at the East Worcester Street Corridor, we are well aware of the major construction project at the I-75 intersection that will be completed in 2019. Fingers crossed. We're almost assured of that. Two roundabouts in the interest of driver safety and traffic flow and a new and attractive bridge over I-75 that will be both pedestrian and bicycle friendly. Connecting the other end of Worcester Street Corridor, and thanks to the thoughtful and much appreciated contributions from the public, we will shortly see the completion of the Worcester Green in historic downtown Bowling Green. But the focus today is on how best to use that area adjoining the campus proper and how that development may be used as a catalyst for other areas in the city. As identified in the report, we have had some minor rezoning efforts with the creation of the B5 zoning classification. Nevertheless, we are all aware that this area that is so important to the future of BG SU is directly tied to quality development. In reading the report, you will find an unmistakable sense of urgency for some very obvious reasons. The diminishing numbers of traditional age college students beginning in 2025 will intensify competitiveness in the marketplace, and increasingly, students and their parents are making decisions about where to attend on the basis of appearance, i.e., image, negative impressions. The effects of these issues on BG SU certainly have a community-wide impact on the city. We know that Kent has made substantial improvements in those areas adjoining the campus. The simple truth is that we, as a community, cannot afford the economic losses associated with declining enrollments. The consultants tell us a painful truth. BG has a major image problem that needs to be fixed, and that the condition of the city is placing the university at a competitive disadvantage in attracting students. While I take some exceptions to these bald, bold statements because I sincerely believe that we have not been standing still as a community, I nevertheless agree that timing is critical, and we have no choice but to move forward with deliberate speed on a priority basis. In my view, the key to our future along the East Worcester Street Corridor will be our ability to attract private investors to build in targeted areas along the corridor, for example, the Thurston-Manville intersection, the area near the Falcon Health Center, and the immediate entry point into the city off of I-75. In order for that to happen, according to the consultants, the city needs to create a regulatory framework for development. Those are a direct quote from the report, "to establish standards for setbacks, landscaping, signage, architectural quality, and then to make certain that there is adherence to those standards." And I agree with the consultants, the city must be proactive rather than reactive, and that means addressing as a matter of priority zoning issues, architectural standards, and expanding the offerings of incentives. Since the contract with Development Strategies of St. Louis is with BG SU, please be assured that President Rogers has a copy of the report and that we will be meeting soon to establish priorities for implementation. By necessity, a shared vision between the city and the university on how best to move forward is paramount, and I have every reason to believe that the excellent working relationships between town and gown will continue unabated. On balance, I believe the report is constructive and certainly reflects strategic thinking. It is prescriptive, but on its own, it is not an antidote for any perceived shortcomings in our joint planning processes. The first steps toward implementation will be critical and will set the tone for success, and I sincerely believe that opportunities abound. I now invite your reactions and comments, and most importantly, your advice, and I wish to thank you for taking time, your valuable time, to read and study this report, and I welcome any feedback that you might have. And you'll be hearing a lot more about this whole report and the steps that will now begin to help us move forward with this whole development and refinement of the East Worcester Street Corridor. But I'd be happy to, this concludes my report, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have on this topic or any other topic for that.
Mr. President, thanks, Mayor, for those, the words and the sense of urgency, and I just want to volunteer that if there's anything that I can do to assist in the implementation, feel free to call on me. I'd be happy to help.
Great. Thank you very much, Bill, and I hope all of you will follow suit and get involved because a big stake in our future is, will be related to this report in one fashion or another. I had a brief conversation with President Rogers before the report was actually released. In fact, he was kind of wringing his hands a little bit and saying, "When will be getting that report?" And I really appreciate that Administrator Treter and others have reminded the folks that have been working with us and that to wrap it up. But frankly, we caused a little bit of the delays because we were asking for clarification on some additional points there and that. But back to President Rogers, he clearly senses this urgency and is quite concerned because the numbers, when you start to look at the demographics here, they're very, very telling, and they've been talked about for some time. Last summer, when we had the Town Gown Conference here, it will be held in Kent this coming summer. That was a major presentation on that very, very topic there, and it is kind of a heavy dose of reality there when you look at those numbers. And then you could factor in the, kind of, it's different from when many of us were in college or considering going to college and so forth. It's kind of a buyer's market, if I can put it in that frame of reference. There's, we, I find it very interesting when I meet with families out at the university, like I recently did with the, on President's Day for the open house, which is always a good thing. I find it very interesting, the kinds of questions that parents are asking compared to maybe just a few short years ago. And they really want to know some very specific kinds of things, so, on what the overall environment is. They'll even ask about safety standards and so forth, the overall health of our environment and so forth.
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, if I may say, I think you've set the stage, though, during your tenure for us to get up and go. I think if anything, you gave us a good workout in, you know, hiring someone to do the land use program. We needed the expert advice. We did. And we received it. You took it well. You made us take it serious. You make us use it in making our planning decisions. You took some things that we, as a community, a city of leadership, could do on our own without professionals, things like green space, becoming more environmentally friendly through our system, our parks and lands that we have now using solar energy. So, I think we're accustomed to change, and it's hard to get the change going. But guess what I want to say is we were walking very slow, and you got us going, and we probably have to run now.
With the help of a lot of people.
With the help of a lot of people.
And good citizen input.
And we need these experts, too. We need it because we perhaps walked too long.
Thank you, Sandy. No, no, and I, you know, I don't want to keep beating this, but these things are all interrelated.
Yes, they are.
And the way that you all, as a council, involved yourself with these various studies and took it very seriously speaks to all of you and the seriousness with which we're approaching these topics. We all wish we could be in the button pushing mode, that we can just make things quickly happen, transform some of the things that we all know need to be fixed, and, but we're moving well down the road there, I think, as you identified, and so I continue to be optimistic that what we can do. And I've already seen some changes there, as you have, even on that corridor. And it is going to make a difference. I stop and think of just little stops along the way. You had to make a very, very tough decision a few years ago with Marketplace. That turned out to be the right kind of decision because it's changed the appearance there, and I hope people understand that. And then we can go down and see the Falcon Healthcare Network there and so forth. And we've had, you know, really, I'm glad that Rose Hess is here, too, because all reflects, you know, concerns on part of the neighborhoods, and we do have some opportunity to fix some things and to make it more attractive. Let's hope we can all keep it going.
Well, being a realtor, I see what they're saying, and you kind of used real estate terms, buyer's market for students. Yes, it's a buyer's market for students, and we have to get in the game of attracting more students and more people.
And that's just, that's just one aspect of this very complex picture because you like to think that the quality of our academic programs are, you know, really the overriding issue. That's, you know, the important thing. But this environment that people are buying into is...
And our schools, it's very important.
Well, that's, and I'm glad that the superintendent and the president of the board are here because what they've been through the last few months and so forth, the continuing pattern is really, really tough because they're wrestling now with some highly complex issues with, we all know, with lots of implications there. But we have to help them, and we have to help ourselves as a community to be, put things on as positive plane as we possibly can.
We can do it, too. We can do it.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments here. I, you know, your closing sentence, two-word sentence, opportunities abound, and I agree. But you said in your comments that you intend to meet soon with the university to help us accomplish. So, who's going to meet with whom?
Well, we've already been meeting.
Okay.
There's been a working group for both the university and the city, and, but now, and President Rogers and I have been very much involved in this in several sessions that we've had and speaking directly with the consultants. And so, now I think this next step that I'm referring to... And so now, I think this next step that I'm referring to is taking this, like we've had to do, you're working on right now, and, you know, taking this and shrinking it a little bit, squeezing it, and starting to identify the priorities on which ones to move on first there. And we know the hospital is very much an important part of this process as well. And we will be meeting soon, President, Mayor, our respective administrations, and picking up those targets.
So do you envision then coming back to council with some recommendations from the university on where they think we ought to be heading?
Well, it'll be a combination. I hope we can do it together. What's... If it's done. I don't know, Laurie, if you care to comment on this anymore because you've been speaking most directly with them on... Okay? But no, we will be meeting soon, and we have to. And as you read the report here, you'll see some things are going to jump right out at you. I said, "Okay, but we have to step the stage first." You've been dealing with some of these zoning issues, and that's right there in the very important part of this whole picture.
Okay. Now, I look forward to hearing what the university stands on of these issues, and I'm sure all of us will be diving into this document here in the next few days.
And as you know, I mean, I hope it's been clear to all of you that the university has been very much a partner in some of the developments that have already taken place, whether you're talking about the I-75 interchange there, the roundabouts, you're talking about the bridge, the area, the land, they've given land out there to help make this possible. And we've been meeting with them on a regular basis on a variety of issues. And I also want to say, as you'll see in the report, that the hospital is very much a part of this because they played a key role there in what they... Their commitment there, that they helped, et cetera, East Worcester. And now they're looking for maybe adding to that.
Mr. Mayor, if I were to summarize what you were saying and the actions that have occurred since at least 2012, it would be that we're moving forward, we're not stagnating, we're not settling for status quo, but we're moving forward after having prepared to move forward. In other words, we've done the work, many people have done the work, got the instruments in place, the institutions in place, and we're ready now to continue to move forward and take the community to where it needs to be.
I like to think that. Ms. Treter.
All right. Well, Greg, I think to answer your question, you know, at the last meeting, Councilmember Robinette gave a really comprehensive update about the Community Action Plan, and part of that was the RFP to discuss, to look at zoning matters. And one of the things that you asked us to do was to wait until this report came out so that if there is a specific area that we want to target in that RFP, that we can do so. So we will look forward to as soon as you've had a chance to look at that. If there is something that you would like to get reflected in the RFP, that we can do so. As you've seen, the RFP is really ready to go. We're just awaiting that final kind of section to see if there's something specific you would like in there, and that we'd like to get moving on it because that's something very actionable that we can do. Start looking at some specific zoning items, not only from the Community Action Plan, but from this new document as well. I think it is timely, and as we know, these processes do take some time. So the sooner we get moving on it, you know, the sooner we can be having those important community discussions about our future down there. So we look forward to working with you on any amendments that you would like to see. If at all possible, we were hoping to get the RFP out in early April, if that's achievable. That would be our recommendation. A few other updates for you this evening. The parking changes have now been all implemented in the city parking lots. We discussed the fee increase a lot, but I want to remind all of you that in addition to the fee adjustments, the legislation also had other amendments as well. That includes that the short-term parking in parking lots has increased to three hours, and handicap parking in parking lots is now free. Parking Lot 2, which is the one located behind CMB's, that area is currently free as we are awaiting new kiosks to be installed in that lot. And we talked a little bit last time about the Park Smarter app and other associated opportunities that those kiosks will give us. And although it's challenging, and Mr. O'Connell will give you an update on the challenging access in downtown, we do want to remind you that there are 157 on-street parking spaces that are free of charge right in front of our downtown businesses, and those remain at the two-hour limit that has long been instituted on those on-street parking. Please remember, and Wendy put a very nice visual reminder right here at your desk, that the city's brand launch party is scheduled for Thursday, March 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Four Corners Center, and we certainly hope that you can attend and celebrate that great moment here in our community. And my last item is to request an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss a property matter. And that completes my report. Subject to your questions.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Treter? Thank you.
Thanks.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. Just a few updates of critical importance right now is the Community Interfaith Breakfast. Here is a copy of the flyer that we would love you to share with your counterparts or coworkers, neighbors, et cetera. Our RCPs right now are extremely low, so we're very concerned with that. Our deadline was Friday. It'll likely be moved to later next week, just again to get the information out there and get a good count for Southside Six, who is so generously supporting our breakfast with food. Again, it's April 2nd, 7:15 to 9:00 a.m., Junior Fair Building. Theme is building peace when there is no peace. The program will feature a video of people from differing faith streams describing their life experiences living within the Bowling Green community, and then we will have a panel of religious leaders just really reacting to that film. We also will have contributions of artwork from the middle school, also the Bowling Green High School Magicals, which are always fabulous, and we love to have that intergenerational involvement. And then we will, of course, have the mayor, President Rogers, and the superintendent to give their words of greeting. And then we will have a free shuttle for BGSU students again. So again, it's really important that we really keep that connection, and so we'll keep meeting and just again, get the word out there. We'd really appreciate that. Also, please mark your calendars for April 25th for the Not in Our Town sixth anniversary already. It will be at the library in the evening. We don't have the exact time yet, but I know you're all busy, so I want to make sure you have that on your calendar. It's going to be cake, ice cream, coffee, and then we will go back to our roots of our video, our film about Bowling Green. And then also Historic Preservation Commission, our first meeting is this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here in this room. That really, we foresee that as an organizational meeting since we're just getting our footing, getting started on that, but hope to see some of you there. And then Mayor mentioned the Ohio Town and Gown being held in Kent on July 18th and 19th. I will forward you that link because the registration is now open, and some of you may be interested in attending that great conference, and we likely will probably be a presenter of some sort of information. So that's it, unless you have any specific questions.
Other questions for Heather.
Mr. President, Heather, going back to the mayor's comment and what Development Strategies has come up with, if I were an investor and I was looking for a place to develop, do we have enough research done now that I would feel confident that Bowling Green knew what its plan was? I know we still want to look at some zoning issues. There's always things to work out, but how close are we, I guess, boil my question down to how close are we to someone coming in, buying property, and building stuff?
You know, I don't think there's a straight answer to your question, Bruce. I really think it depends on the location. You know, if you read that more in depth, you'll see that it really depends on the location, those zoning regulations. I think a lot of it revolves, and you know, we were... I think we were all a little disappointed that townhomes didn't work in that area we originally were looking at. They don't work right now, but maybe if we set the stage for that first catalytic project that later on down the road, maybe three, five years from now, that will work. University's going to keep buying properties where they can buy and really accumulate some of these blocks. And so I think this helps us get to the meat and potatoes of what needs to happen, and I don't have a straight answer for you, though, Bruce. You put me on the spot with that one. I mean, I think it's just, you know, it's a lot of moving parts. There is money to be invested, and a lot of different partnerships that we can look at, and I think that does a good job of really identifying those partners. You know, really, the hospital, I don't think any of us really thought the hospital would be a priority at first, and I think that idea is great and something we can definitely build on.
Mr. President, may I add to, you know, where I see it, it looks like the ball's in our court right now as a council because we now have the opportunity with all of this information to decide what zoning areas need to look like, what areas of town need to have what kind of zoning so that we can determine what, who to attract. And we'll do that through the zoning effort, and if we want a certain area to attract our departments or whatever, whatever it is we're trying to do, we can control that by the way we approach the zoning. So the ball's in our court, and we've got to take action. We've got to study this new report. We've got to overlay that over the work we're already doing with the cap and the zoning review that's being contemplated right now with that RFP and make it all happen. But we've got to look in the mirror. It's on us. It's on the seven of us to make this happen. That's the way I see it.
Other questions for Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Good evening. Just one quick event update, and then I will give you an update on another project that's underway. This Saturday is our annual pint-sized prom, so a meeting with children or grandchildren, five and under, just really a cute event that we're having. New location this year. So new location this year because in the past it's been held at the Veterans Building. So you may have noticed, driving by City Park, that the project is a little bit underway. There has been some action. I do not know when demolition of the buildings will be just yet. We were hopeful maybe later this week, but we're waiting on abandonment of a gas line under the Veterans Building, sort of important to do first. So we're working with Columbia Gas to get that done, and then the contractor is in place and they're ready to go. They have done some of the work that they can ahead of that, including some salvage work. Again, we're salvaging the floor in the Vet South Building, excuse me, and some of the stone around the fireplace in the Girl Scout Building to use in the new building. So some of that work, and then some other things have occurred out there. So just drive around the park and you'll see that there's action going on. Any questions on that? Oh, I will add that we had anticipated that the front entrance to the park would be closed for a couple of weeks at the beginning of the project. That is not going to happen. We're going to do some of the end work on the paving and things at the end of the project in talking about things that makes more sense to do that. So we will not have to do that. Some of the work that they did up front, they were able to maintain one lane in and out. So we have not had to close the park, and we don't anticipate having to do that at all. Typically, their work is going to be done Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Any other questions?
Questions for Kristen. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell.
As Laurie mentioned, just want to give you an update on the Worcester and Main closure we've got going through town right now. So obviously, they're putting in the water line up to the intersection of Worcester and Main, and so the plan right now is that that'll be closed through this week and then be opened at the latest Saturday afternoon. Hopefully, hopefully be a little sooner than that, but the goal of this closure really is to allow them to get through the intersection in all four directions. Obviously, they've been working from the south, moving north, but they're going to push the water line just to the north side of the intersection, east and west sides as well. And then we also have a sewer to replace on South Main from Worcester Street down to about Clough Street. And so the goal during this closure will be to tap the sewer that's on Worcester, set a manhole just south of the intersection outside of what will be the new brick area because we don't want to have any water valves or sewer manholes in the brick area when that's completed. And once that's done, then they can get two-way traffic open back up again. There will still be water line work to do going north up to Oak Street and also to the east and west, one block in east direction, so from Church and Prospect area. Going to the south, again, I mentioned that the sewer will have to go from Worcester south down to Clough Street, so we're not done with, you know, traffic detours and moving traffic from the east side to the west side of the street. There's also some sewers to reline. That can be done. We've been at many times around town where they put a pipe inside the pipe, they cure the pipe inside the old sewer, so it doesn't require any excavation, but you do have to access the manholes from the start and the end of the run. Those are the main highlights. Trish, trying to update you on the status of the project and where we are. So if you have questions, be happy to try to answer those.
Questions for Brian.
Okay.
Brian, do you anticipate this will be the only complete closure that will be required or will there be additional ones, or will it be phased?
I'd like for Kraft to answer that question, but he's not here tonight, but I believe this is the only closure. He's much more in tune with the project than I am because the engineering division is running that project for us. But if Laurie doesn't say otherwise, I believe it's... Sure.
For the paving? Yeah. Okay.
When they put the bricks back, I believe that's probably when they'll have the closure for that portion, but for our work, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. He's not with us.
Yes, yes, and no.
Thank you. We do appreciate those reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening?
Council committee reports?
No, Mr. President, but I would like to say something based on the comments, and it goes, first of all, goes to thank the Chamber and Clint for reporting radio show. Joe Fossett was interviewed this morning and gave a very detailed explanation of that effort, roadwork that went on at Four Corners, the history behind it, and why. I thought that was great, and it was repeated a couple of times. I guess you do that every hour, so that's great. But that also brought up another point that I wanted to thank radio for, is, and bring up the point of the county's, State of the County... I wasn't able to attend, but I was able to listen to it live because of radio. And what struck me most about listening to the State of the County was the opportunity. It reinforces what the mayor... You know, we... Things are going well economically with economic development of the county. Here we are, not only the county seat, but geographic center of the county, and we've got to build on that. We have an opportunity to make sure Bowling Green shares in that overall success of the county economically. We've got to keep our minds on that prize that everything we do, everything we do, look at in the context of how are we improving economic development, because everything we do has an impact, whether we're talking about safety of our citizens, reception of the city based on that, whether we're talking about our public, whether we're talking about how we fix our roads, everything is tied into economic development. And this whole effort that we're getting ready to dive into and set the stage for with zoning is key to that. So I just want to say we're in a good place right now as a community, I think, with being the county seat of a county that's doing well, and we've got to seize that opportunity, set ourselves up.
Thanks, Greg.
Mr. President, I just want to remind everyone that before our next meeting on April 1st at 6 o'clock, there will be another Community Improvement Committee meeting regarding single-use plastic bags.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. President, just piggybacks on what Mark said, where we're at with the... As you all know, you've been at the meetings, as we've had two Community Improvement Committees, public hearings where we've got input from citizens, very valuable input, I might add. And we're about at the point where we're going to try and piece something together. You can... You talk in generalities for a while, and then at some point you have to come up with something and then talk and refine that. And because of the... You have to be careful when you have two committee members talk to each other because, about that, because that constitutes a majority of the committee. So we're coming up with our own separate proposals, maybe a little bit inefficient, but given the constraints, it's a way to go forward. And I just wanted to let the public know, let council know, that I have my 37th Fourth Ward Quarterly Meeting on March 27th at the Community Center, Community Room A, from 7:00 to 9:00. All the public's welcome. And as a member of the Community Improvement Committee, what I'm hoping to do is present a very rough attempt to come up with something more concrete regarding single-use plastic bags, and hopefully there'll be quite a bit of the public there, and of course, everyone's welcome, to kind of refine that so it's something that can then go into our April 1st meeting. So I just wanted to make that announcement, so it's a bona fide public meeting, and I would encourage all that have an interest in single-use plastic bags to show up on March 27th at the Community Center from 7:00 to 9:00. I would normally not break it off at 9:00, but the Community Center closes at 9:00, so there you go. If you're afraid it would go too long, it'd have to be done by 9:00.
Thank you, Bill. Very good. Thank you for those reports. Jamie, would you please lead us through the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading. Resolution number 3728. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give Resolution 3728 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kate or Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for Resolution 3728.
Resolution for second and third reading. Resolution number 3728. Resolution transferring previously appropriated funds.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt Resolution 3728.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3728 is adopted.
Resolution, or I'm sorry, ordinance number 8757 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give ordinance 8757 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
And Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8757.
Ordinance number 8757 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8757.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. Mr. President, on the previous resolution that we gave three readings, that was for a couple thousand dollars for some personal and professional legal services, and this ordinance is for a street repair, $45,000. People that don't have access to this information might like to know what we're expediting this for.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
And Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8757 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8758 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for design, engineering, right-of-way acquisition, construction, and other services relating to Poe Road improvements and ditch culvert Phase 2 improvement project. Ordinance number 8759 for first reading. Ordinance certifying unpaid cost of snow removal to the county auditor for replacement on the tax duplicate. Ordinance number 8760 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of materials not needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give ordinance 8760 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
And Robinette?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8760.
Ordinance number 8760 for second and third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sell and/or otherwise dispose of materials not needed for municipal purposes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8760. I think I'm probably out of order there, right?
Nope. You're right. I'm just waiting for Sandy.
Oh, just waiting for me. Okay. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
And Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8760.
Let's just... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance 8760.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
And Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes. The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 8760.
Let's just... I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance 8760.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8750 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8751 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 35.70 of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding city fees and fees charged for services. Ordinance number 8756 for second reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 113.04 B, D, and E of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding mobile food vendors. Legislation for third reading. Ordinance number 8750 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01N of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary scheduled established.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8750.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
And Roland?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
And Harold?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8750 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8751 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to pay for school police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8751.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
And Osbacher?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8750 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8752 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the exchange of real estate with Wood County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
I move to adopt ordinance 8752.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jamie, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hollenbaugh?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
And Robinette?
Yes.
The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8750.
Ordinance number 8760 for second and third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to accept an easement for utility purposes from Howard M. Gray and Linda S. Gray.
I move to adopt ordinance 8753.
Second.
Moved and seconded.